Oh, that's for you, babe. Adult coloring, adult coloring books.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. You're like, what is this? Yes.
Where's Doug?
Negative.
Oh, there's Doug.
No, thank you. Happy Pi Day. So we're good? Hello and welcome. We are going to go ahead and reconvene our open session. And we first like to start with the pledge of allegiance and in honor of Pi Day, we would like Stephen Wees to say the pledge.
I somehow managed to forget that it was Pi Day, sorry. I have my shirt and I show the Union a reply. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the virgin and just as for all.
Union shirts are still acceptable, so you're welcome. All right, so are we gonna go ahead and take roll call? Trustee Vanegas is, we're trying to have him connect. He was with us earlier and somehow got disconnected, but he will be teleconferencing in as soon as he's in. We'll get him on board. All right. Uh, trustee Wong.
Here.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Present.
Vice President Pizzotti.
I'm here.
And I too am present, uh, present and um, our superintendent is also conferencing in um, teleconferencing it. Okay, so announcements of actions taken in closed session. Government Code Section 54957.6 Conference with Labor Negotiators, um, information received. And Government Code Section 54957, uh, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal and Release. The Board voted unanimously with five trustees voting yes to implement the suspension of a classified employee. And Conference with Real Property Negotiators pursuant to Government Code 54956.8. Information, information received and direction given. Right? Next is the approval of our agenda. Are there any changes?
I believe Superintendent Hildreth, if she calls in, has, or unless, no.
I'll, I've gotta change. I'll pull, I wanna pull O to C and uh, pull it from the agenda.
All right. And in case anybody was wondering what O to C is, that is the approval of the instructional calendar for the Washington Unified School District's 2025-2026 school year. And from what we are going to do is we're going to pull it. However, if you have any comments in regards to it, we would appreciate it. We would like to hear them so that it can help our staff know what it is that they, any of the recommendations that are out there. But with that being said.
President Coffey, just clarification, pulling for future discussion, correct?
Yes, so we are going to pull it for future discussion and then future discussion after that and then later, uh, board meeting, we'll have it as an action item. Right? So do I have anybody consent? No move.
I second.
All right. Uh, Clerk Kirby Gonzalez moves, uh, trustee Wong seconds. Oh, wait, roll call? Does he be on yet? Okay, no worries. We'll go with what we have. So trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti.
Aye.
And I too say aye. All right, so that will now be on another agenda for another day. Okay, so communications and celebrations, uh, recognition of the River City Productions thespians, Matt Ainsworth.
Thank you.
That was well choreographed. Good evening, President Coffey, Vice President Pizzotti, trustees. Um, we're excited tonight to have Chris Hanks from River City High School and the River City High School Productions team, um, sharing updates. Uh, this year, River City Productions has extended their involvement in film, theater, podcasting and mural painting and has engaged over 125 students in diverse projects throughout the academic year. Producers of Troop 8918 will provide insights into their latest endeavors, reflecting the passion and creativity thrive, driving the thriving arts community. So I'll turn it over to them.
Good evening. I'm Morgan Acassola, Senior and Executive Producer of thespian Troop 8918. And I am excited to share with you tonight the many ways RCHS Productions brings the arts alive. March is Theater in Our Schools Month, so we are joining thousands of students and theater educators to raise awareness for the impact of theater education. Together, we hope to draw attention to the need for more access to arts immediate entertainment, education for all students to assert that theater education teaches vital 21st century skills, critical to the success on and off stage. According to William Penn Foundation findings, arts education helps to increase students' ability to manage behavior, make decisions and cultivate a positive concept of self. Our thespian troupe is once again surpassing expectations and experiencing our strongest year to date. As a CTA Arts and Media Entertainment Pathway, CTSO, or Career Technical Student Organization, this club not only offers weekly meetings for interested students, but allows for leadership opportunities for inducted members and pledges alike. To become inducted as a pledge must provide, a pledge must provide 100 hours of service in troupe activities. Subsequent ranks are earned at each additional 100 hours. To date, members and pledges have banked more than 7,500 hours to after-school stage and screen work. Beside me are my fellow producers. We've engaged in leadership training, starting with our producer retreat to Sly Park, where we met physical and mental challenges and devise a plan for this year. Additionally, we've met monthly with the CTSO leaders as we've helped produce the River CTE Young Professional Conference, where we led a peer-to-peer breakout session about leadership and teamwork.
Hello, my name is Ariel Arada. I am a sophomore and I am one of the music collaborative. Our CTE pathways are guided by an advisory panel of local industry professionals who we also get to meet and interact with when they come to our classes as guest speakers. In this year's music collaboration with our choir teacher, we have been meeting twice a month to build musical and vocal skills, which we showcased at Linea, another opening and forthcoming in the Spring Musical. Another fun way we collaborated is around Halloween, when we volunteered at Stonegate Harvest Festival, the city of West Sacramento's Safe Trunk or Treat, and hosted a costume contest at River City High School.
Hi, I'm Ami Sanchez. I'm a senior and the Raider Studio Films producer. Our troupe continues to explore media content creation through a variety of outlets. You can find the assortment of under-the-bus webisodes, name of podcast installments, hundred of student videos and behind-the-studio doors glimpses into our creativity on our YouTube channel and Instagram feed. Always a highlight of our media creation is the annual Film Festival. This year, 41 awards were delivered to outstanding filmmakers and actors. Additionally, we screened our four counterparts films, which were all pitched, written, produced and filmed and edited by the Advanced Video Production Class. The entire Film Festival lineup can be viewed on our YouTube channel.
Hi, I'm Alex Catlett, the studio theater producer and technical director for this year's main stage shows. Our fall play, Puffs, was a magical success. We sold out all seven of our performances as we revealed the untold stories of the puffs always in the shadow of Harry Potter. This Off-Broadway hit was a huge endeavor with its 50-plus characters, hundreds of costumes, props and technical cues. This January, I got the chance to student-direct our Linea High School Theater Festival one-act entry at the Bottom of Lake Missoula. For this show, I received a silver award in student direction. Our members also earned several other awards. Respondent's prize awards were earned for Alec Pixie's monologue and Penelope Cooper's musical theater solo. Bronze awards were earned by Mackia Sparks' monologue, Yvain Stewart's monologue and Jude Lancaster's costume designs. And collectively, the Advanced Theater Performance Class earned a bronze award for our production of At the Bottom of Lake Missoula. This year's showing at Linea tops last year as River City's best competitive lineup at the festival to date.
Hello, I'm Yvain Junior and producer for our unique art collective. We've continued to host school-wide art contests with the troupe supplying art supplies to many entries. With the success of our massive mural installment last year in the art building, we decided to add more paint to the walls in what is considered the backstage of our studio theater. We are currently painting logos representing each of the main stage and one-act shows RCHS Productions has produced over the last eight years. Beyond the school site, RCHS Productions gets out to as many professional experiences as possible. Some of my favorites have been to be seeing live productions. In the last year, we have seen three major productions and will get to see a show and tour the facility at B Street Theater's Sophia in just a few weeks. Overall, we've been able to get 90 students into seats to witness professional theater.
Hello, my name is Mary Huffner. I'm a junior and the producer and lead writer for our podcast. Now in its fourth season, named podcast is a post-apocalyptic narrative serial that can be subscribed to wherever you listen to your favorite podcasts. I love getting to collaborate with my team and to see its worldwide reach. As you're beginning to notice, our creative works extend far beyond the tight walls of River City. Other trips into this field, into the field this year have included trips to the NorCal Film Expo, a tour of Omega Cinema Studios and our upcoming tours of the professional working spaces of local theater, theater venues. Closer to home, we are just beginning to get our Spring Musical, The Hunchback of Notre Dame, off, off the ground, literally. Our two-story set is currently being built at Bright by Jason Billington and the NCT Construction Students. In May, you are invited to see this set and venture into medieval Paris to explore the challenging and still relevant themes of our show with our more than 50 cast and crew members.
Hi, I am Penelope Junior and the additional co-producer for our music collaborative. We already had a busy season, yet there is still more to come. Currently, we are rehearsing and ready to hit the road to WUSD Elementary Schools with our Storybook and Chapterbook Theater Tour. And some of our favorite events, the Peer-to-Peer Hanky Awards in the highly anticipated thespian induction and rank advancement ceremony, where we're on track to induct an additional 25 lifetime thespians and present 120-star rank advancements. In closing, I'd like to quote Dr. Kimberly Brown. "We must not fail to create career, career pathways for students of the arts. Career pathways that provide even more reason to stay in school for students confidently moving forward toward a bright future."
All right, so thank you, Penelope and producers. Good job. So if it sounds like a lot of work, it is, um, and it's all because of these guys, um, I'd love to say yes to them. So, um, we're up at, by tomorrow, I think we'll be at 7,600 hours. It adds up quick. Um, and that's just this year. We're on track to meet last year's record high of 12,000. We heard about that last year when we saw you. We hit 12,000 after-school hours last year. So, uh, we wanna thank you, of course, um, the board, Superintendent Hildreth and the cabinet once again for the ongoing and relentless support of the arts. Not all districts have administrations that champion the creative arts in such a robust way as ours. Additionally, I must thank Mrs. Billingsley and the River City Administration, teachers and staff for their continued support. We couldn't do all of this without them. So we hope that the fact shared tonight and the program results that we offer can attest to the power that a well-supported arts program can have on the lives of both participants and the community at large. And thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity tonight to come share with you.
You're so great. And if it's all right with you guys, we'd like to come up where you're at and take a picture with you guys.
Yeah. Right up there.
Thank you so very much. And now we are moving on to recognizing the 2024 Washington Unified School District eighth-grade field trip to Wonder Valley Outdoor Education Center. Also, Matt.
Uh, good evening again. Um, we're excited to share a celebration on our recent eighth-grade field trip to Wonder Valley Outdoor Education Center. Tonight, we're joined by Southport teacher Shaw Ritchie and Southport students Phoenix and Fen, who will be sharing the experiences of both students and adults who participated in this memorable field trip opportunity for all eighth graders in the district.
Hi, I'm Shaw Ritchie. I'm a Southport eighth, eighth-grade science teacher. I brought Finn and Phoenix with me because I thought they'd love to share their experience.
Hi, I'm Phoenix and I was really grateful to go on the Wonder Valley trip because we didn't get to go to. Um, some of the things we did were zip lining and raft building. For raft building, we had to work teams to make things that floated out of the, um, water carton. And I got to test them out in the pool. For zip lining, we got to go up 50 feet and zip line down and we learned all about rope.
Good evening. I'm Penny and Dave and I'm a Southport eighth grader. I am very honored to go on the eighth grade Wonder Valley field trip. I was not here for the grade, so I did not miss going. I transitioned here when I was finished in the Sacramento Unified School District. So that was my seventh grade year. My favorite part about Wonder Valley was the zip lining. I got to go twice. Once was when they had to zip line me up from the bottom and then go all the way back down. So tedious work. Another activity I did was the raft building. Um, that was very fun. We built a giant raft, uh, did not hold up.
Oh, no.
Did not hold up at all. But then again, we had like some 50-pound dude go on it, so didn't really hold up that well. The food at Wonder Valley was fantastic, actually. We did have a private chef that did have the meat of every dietary needs. Pretty nice.
Thank you. Um, and just as a teacher, I just really thank everyone to help make this possible. Um, I've seen a lot of the kids, all they do is compete against each other in the K8s and it was really cool to just see them come together and they were playing volleyball with each other on the same teams and just hanging out and that was really special to see as a teacher.
And thanks to the school board, um, Dr. Hildreth and cabinet for providing this opportunity. I know it was a quick turnaround. I believe it was approved at the end of December and they were on the bus at the end of January. So thank you to, um, our site administrators and every site's, uh, staff, um, the parents, um, and, and Wonder Valley. And so thank you for providing this opportunity for our students.
Thank you. I'm glad you're able to go. Yeah, we can, we're not blocking. Oh.
Okay.
Welcome to the duck family. All right. So our association reports. Well, first, we have our student board member, Diego Martinez from Yolo, who is going to, uh, give our first student report.
Hello, my name is Diego Martinez. I. My name is Diego Martinez. I am a student board representative for Yolo High School and I'll be presenting the student board report. For Bridgeway, the Sacramento Kings hosted a courtside with the best, with the Kings Basketball Skills Clinic for the middle schoolers and it was thanks for, it was thanks to Mr. Kevin Collins for organizing this for the students. And their, and also their middle school put together presentations that create and created plans to beautify planters around the campus and it was a big, big thanks to the WUSD. WUSD maintenance team for consulting with the, with them and going the extra mile to help make the students' plans become a reality. For Riverbank, on March 5th, they had a Community Career Day and, and, uh, they present, preschoolers through eighth graders got to visit booths where the community members presented about their careers and they were, there was a lot of positive comments from the parents to students and families and teachers. Uh, and also, uh, the next day was the recreation assemblies where over 108 students recognized for honor roll for the first semester grades and over 116 students recognized about, about 95% of attendance and higher. For Alcorn, the middle schoolers competed at Mesa competition and three groups moved on to the state. Eighth graders watched a play by Kaisar about dealing with social, social emotional learning as they gone through high school and they also participated in the Read Across America and had a guest reader in their classroom. For Southport, their, their students had their staff, uh, from Sacramento Kings read them, read them for, with the special guest with, for their mass reader competition during the Read, Read Across America. Seventh graders participated in a full day of social emotional awareness activities to challenge day this week and their students also signed, signed pledges to be the change this week and staff ready to support, to support them. For Stonegate, all students on Stonegate campus were reading and, reading and in the Read Across America. See above, um, Mrs. Rap Patterson, Stonegate principal, reading to the elementary students in PE class. And they also had a variety of guest speakers on campus from West Sac Police Department, District Office and various staff from other, uh, community members. Stonegate, Stonegate students from Leadership created a, fun activities for all students to participate, including on grade level rallies. For Westmore, they had a total of 18 professionals from for Read Across America for their career day. All across classrooms, they had a trifold displays to celebrate Black History Month and student leadership continues to help students, students to class and run rallies. For Westfield, they would like to thank those that joined the, that joined them for the Read Across America Day and thanks for, for the students that they enjoyed it and thanks to the school board members, Kobe Pizzotti and Jackie Wong and thanks to Autry Streak, Jay Burns, Stacy Tran, Carlos Salvo, Rosie Arcona and Marsley Romero. And, and all of the middle school students are participating in college visits this year and all of the eighth graders had a opportunity to visit UC Davis and sixth grader students had a, visited Sac State, Sac City College and they also had seventh graders going to Sac State for the 10th of April and great opportunities for the students. For Uva, three of their female students in seventh through eighth grade attended a, a empower her conference with the students from, from the K-38 schools at UC Davis. They look forward to the next in-person day on Thursday, March 21st and on Friday, March 8th. Their student participated in a, in a cross, Read Across America Day for classrooms. For Washington Adult School, their students, there's, their English language learners made a presentation to share with, with each other about distracted driving, driving under the influence and seatbelt and safe, and child safety. Washington Adult School offers a flexible class schedule, mornings and evenings to students who want to learn English, G, GDP prep classes in English and Spanish as well as a high school diploma program. For Yolo High School, they continue to have their handball tournaments and will soon have their handball wall built. On Thursday, March 7th, and, and March 7th, the Yolo, the Yolo students participated in the conversation with Dr. Rios at the Bright Campus and students have completed over 460 courses compared to last year's 400 and their credit recovery system. For River City, they would like to congratulate the choir, their choir team for their wonderful performance and River City students pledge the pledge to be the change. That's all for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Diego. If you'd like, you can stay up here with us and participate as, as we do and vote on things if you feel like it or you can, you know, take a step down if you like, but it's your choice.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We don't take it personal. We really don't. It's okay. But, but thank you. All right, and now it's for our, uh, WSTA report and it'll be President Doug Nepp.
Wow, I'm getting applause before I start these days.
They decided to wear.
Only before.
You know, no pie.
That's true. Yeah, no pie, WSTA green. Thank you very much, although I, as a math geek, I celebrate Pi Day, but. Um, first of all, good evening, um, President Coffey, Vice President, um, Pizzotti, um, and trustees. It is, it's good to see you as always. Good evening, Cheryl, disembodied Cheryl, Dr. Hildreth, I know you're there somewhere, and good evening cabinet. Um, the first thing I wanna do is I wanna shout out to the thespians that, oh, hi. I know her. I wanna shout out to the thespians that came tonight. My goodness, did you hear all those programs? I mean, amazing. It's super exciting. My daughter's old best friend was there, so I got to visit and just seeing people come out of their show is fantastic. I wanted to bring up something I brought up a couple of years ago and just, just, just for consideration and that is I would love to see WUSD adopt a choir pathway program starting in middle school. Um, I say this all the time as a music minor and a musician myself. The voice is universal access. Nobody has to pay for an instrument. There's no high cost to learning how to sing and it's something you can take with you from the shower to the street corner to gigs at the, um, at the local, you know, the local coffee shop, right? You can, um, you can sing anywhere you want to. You can busk. That's what, Jackie, that's what, when I meant by the street corner is busking, not, yeah, okay. Well, busking is the word for musicians who sing on the street, um, which is a wonderful tradition. So I want you to consider choir because it is, we always talk about equity and choice and choir is something that everybody can do. I'm not a vocalist myself. I'm a musician, but I love giving access, so let's consider that. I'm not a vocalist myself. I'm a musician, but I love giving access. So let's consider that for our pathways. I want to shout out to our Southport teachers that are here in number tonight. I like ducks. I like bees better, but I really like ducks. And I love visiting with my Southport teachers. Some of them I've known longer than anybody in the district. So it's good to see you, Rhonda. We worked together years ago. I wanted to talk a little bit about the overnight field trips that were discussed tonight because I just wanted to thank you so much for providing those opportunities. One of the early lessons that I learned in like 2023, when I started here, I was working at Yolo as a substitute. And one of the things I didn't know existed would be that in small communities like West Sacramento, there were kids who never left their town. And I had my privilege caused me to not know that. One of the things I like to say now after working at Yolo is opportunity leads kids to see opportunity. Sometimes we don't know where we can go until we see that there are other places in the world to go to. And I just want to celebrate, I know these field trips are expensive, but the priority that our school board and our cabinet has put on these field trips means so many of our kids who wouldn't know that they could do and experience and move forward, get that opportunity. I think it's way more powerful we get than we give it credit for. So kudos to you. It's a well deserved pat on the back. I'm going to talk a little bit about something that's a little harder to talk about, which is some of the safety issues that we've had recently. I know that you're familiar with some of the issues across the district last week. And I thought that the timing, although I never, it, last week was a really challenging week in our district and we were all really busy. I thought it was the timing after what we talked about the last school board meeting in prioritizing our restorative practices in this district couldn't have been more appropriate. And I understand that a lot of the issues that we had last week were not necessarily with students, although most of them were with students kind of at a side, a side step. I want to repeat that if we're going to do restorative work, we have to fund restorative work. It has to be funded. It has to be more than, than lip service. And I know that sometimes folks don't know what restorative work, but restorative work means having a conversation with a student who's struggling, struggling in a behavior way when they're struggling, not waiting, not having a class meeting about positive behavioral supports after the fact with the whole class. It's in the moment. It's, if you've ever been a teacher, you know the phrase teachable moment. It's the teachable moment for behavior, right? And we have these wonderful restorative centers, but we do not have staffing in those centers so that we have a place to send kids. So what happens? Oftentimes our kids get sent up to the office. There's not, even though our office staff tries so hard, they have a whole other job to do. So there's not often a lot of restorative work that happens there and then they just get sent back to class. And sometimes the lesson we teach when we do that is that student behavior, even negative behavior gets the outcome students want, which is attention. The students will seek native attention and positive attention. So in the absence of a lesson, we're kind of reinforcing our own feedback loop. I know this is a challenging thing because funding is a problem with schools. But I want our board and our cabinet to consider that we are working in our district to reach our targets on the LCFF dashboard for suspension. And there is finances that are associated with that. However, in the absence of real restorative work, I'm at a place where I have to direct my teachers to consider their right to suspend. And then that hits our LCFF dashboard, our ability to meet our targets at our LCFF dashboard. But I can tell you right now, our teachers are at wits end and they don't know what to do. And we all recognize that typically suspension isn't the answer. We are not serving students with suspension. Most of the kids that we're suspending don't give any, get any kind of restorative outcome when they're suspended. In fact, we're just taking them away from education. We're making the problem worse. But with my teachers, their hands are tied and we don't know what to do to send the message. So if we have to impact our targets on the dashboard and suspend kids that we don't want to suspend, we have to find some way to represent our students to send the message that they need more. So I'd like you to consider that, so we don't have to go that route. Briefly, on salary and benefit, I appreciate the robust discussion we're having with HR and the cabinet. And we've been talking a lot about this kind of leading up to our negotiations. I just want to remind the board, because I know we're, we're starting to look at times that are a little more challenging starting next year. But I wanted to remind the board that since 2021, WUSD, as well as the rest of the state, has received over 15% of ongoing funds increases, starting with the governor's revise in 2021. All of those increases have not been shared to date with CSEA and WSTA. So as you're looking forward, and there's a lot of talk about doom and gloom, I want to remind you that there's still money that hasn't been, that hasn't been distributed fairly. And when I reflect upon that, I think about what targets are for recruitment. What percentage of budgets need to be spent to adequately recruit? And research shows that for certificated, school districts really need to spend about 40% of their budget on compensation. And for classified, school districts really need to spend about 35% of their budget on, on compensation. Currently, WUSD for teachers are spending 5% below and for classified are spending 5% below. Spending 35% on, uh, 35% on teachers and 30% on classified. Now, I know we can't make up that gap overnight and probably not in a year. But if we're looking to continue to compete, to recruit and retain quality teachers, we need to start to fill that gap and start to get it towards to that 40 and 35% respectively. I also want to remind folks that over the past three years, WSTA and CSEA has watched salary increases for the superintendent and salary reclasses for several of our administrative officials. And WSTA, and I will speak for CSEA for this moment, but I'll probably repeat this. We believe in paying people what they're worth and keeping up with the cost of living. So we have actually encouraged these changes. But every time this occurred, we came to the, we came to the pulpit here and we reminded folks that we hope you encourage the same when it's time for teachers and classified staff. Because if we're all one family, we treat each other the same. And when we come to the table and ask for reciprocation, we know that you're going to go for it because we work together. All right, I'm going to see the rest of my time to Dr. Bradley. That was a really strange transition. But Dr. Bradley, coming up.
Good evening, first, hi, Dr. Hildreth. Hi, Farah. Hi, Autry. Hi, everyone. So my name is Amber Bradley. I'm a social science teacher at River City High School. I am also the community schools chair for the West Sacramento Teachers Association. I've been working with community schools teams over the past year on developing programs at our four community school sites. I would like to give some folks their flowers tonight. Dr. Mascarenas, the four site facilitators, Bianca, Ashraf, Sana and Monica, and also Bianca and Gwen from United Way. They've done so much amazing work and deserve all the recognition. And I'm happy to begin this work with June Flores as she transitions into the role for Dr. Mascarenas. She is a strong advocate for our community and she is going to do well in this role. Tonight, you have the opportunity to do something monumental. We have been working for months to get a contract approved by the board for the Yolo Food Bank. We have a serious lack of resources for our families in West Sacramento. We have no shelter for our unhoused populations. We have families who do not have enough food to feed their families and they aren't able to meet the needs through the established food giveaways that we have in West Sacramento. Folks are lining up hours early to receive these services and often there isn't enough food to go around. You are in a place tonight where you can make a difference. The safest communities are not the communities with the most police officers, but the communities with the most resources. We have a chance to improve the safety of our community and the lives of our students. We are following in the footsteps of abolitionists in the past who have pushed forward through adversity to improve conditions of the people. Approving this contract is revolutionary work. Please take this opportunity to approve the contract with the Yolo Food Bank tonight. Be the change and help our community. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And now for our CS, CSEA, and I believe it is our Vice President Ruth.
Thank you. Good evening, President Coffey, Superintendent Hildreth, trustees, staff and public. Thank you for allowing us this time. At the beginning of this year, you may remember that I shared that I would like us to have greater self-awareness in what motivates us, what grounds us, and ultimately what moves us to action. I would like us to be united in what's best, fair and safe for our employees because that will positively impact our students and camps. As we progress through this school year, we have seen some positive changes, such as responsiveness to Article 14.5 violation. Just to remind everyone, Article 14.5 is a contractual right to protect against supervisors working classified employees extra hours for 20 or more consecutive days and not paying statutory benefits that they deserve. Although we are still seeing this happen across the district, the responsiveness from HR has improved. Thank you. Another positive change is our recent progress with community schools. I would like to commend Ms. Flores and Dr. Burns for bringing Yolo Food Bank contract to the board for your approval tonight. We should all be united in feeding our children and their families. It is painful to hear this, but it needs to be said again. Food insecurity is real. Hundreds of our students face this hardship on a daily basis. Many of our classified employees who live in our community are also struggling with high costs. Food, gas, heat, medical, dental, rent, et cetera. I want to be clear that classified employees that have children in our schools should also be able to receive resources from their child's community school. So if they are in need, I will be encouraging our members to access those resources as well. They are in fact, a part of our community. As we negotiate with the district, we want to make sure that equity and fairness continues to be on the forefront of everyone's mind because it's really important. Like President Knapp said, and President Gandara has said previously, we need to bridge the salary gap. We need to think, is it equitable and fair? Progressing to the end of a salary schedule for a classified employee in Washington Unified takes 23 years. 23 years. While classified employees, for example, in Woodland, it only takes six. Also, we need to think, is it fair and equitable that workload does not in fact equate to more pay or raises? While workload for others at top levels in this district, it does. Lastly, I want to close by addressing general safety on our campuses. I will not call out any campuses or administrator because this is not a site problem. This is a systems problem. We are all or should be familiar with the Yolo County Grand Jury Report. One of the recommendations in the, quote, Are We There Yet Report says, quote, "Safety training, including all those related to threats of violence, will be provided to teachers, regular and substitutes. Staff, administrators, yearly. Multiple opportunities for training will be available throughout the 20, 23, the 24 school year and attendance will be monitored," unquote. I am requesting that any formal training includes all classified employees. Next week, I was told will be my first formal safety training with the district. And I commend Principal Dietrich for encouraging all our classified employees to attend on her campus. I hope the same for every single campus. If they actually happened, we must have access and transparency to any assessments that have been done on our campuses that actually address our current vulnerabilities. Sites need support to implement real change where it is needed. Whether it is a gate, a camera, a key, lighting, blinds, bushes, a process, a policy, whatever it is, we all need to do the work to increase our levels of safety and security. We cannot prevent every threat and we will never know what someone is planning in their head, but we can learn from experts. We can take action and acknowledge what is happening. We can progress as one unified defense against people who are interested in creating violence on our campuses. This has to be an investment because improvements, recommendations will come at a cost. Invest in repairing that broken gate. Fix that signage. That is outdated. Help support site principals and staff who are supposed to do all the things. Their list is endless. Improve test scores, outcomes, lower suspension rates, train, evaluate staff, communicate constantly, respond to hundreds of parents' questions and concerns. Always be positive, always be restorative. Oh, and keep all of your students and staff safe on a daily basis. They need support to help fulfill these recommendations. This doesn't have to be a pressure cooker. It feels like a pressure cooker. There's a lot of people that feel like it's about to burst. Please reach out to the sites where actual training has happened. Ask who was included? Who was at those trainings? How effective was it? We need accountability. People are getting hurt. We cannot say it's not happening here. And I've talked about this before. I'll talk about it again. As a board, I'm asking you to reconsider supporting an SRO position. Anyone that thinks it's not necessary or does not support it for political reasons, I want you to know West Sac PD is on our campuses now. Our schools call the police department for help. You can see their cars. They're there. West Sac PD, they're responding to calls for service, risk assessments, parent disputes, et cetera. I'll leave you with this pertinent question. Should we just continue to have random patrol officers respond to in-progress calls for help? Or should we have an officer that's trained, dedicated and known to our students and staff respond? Her, her, or his relationship will prove important during the inevitable at-time volatile events that are currently negatively impacting our campuses. Thank you for the time.
To Vice President. Okay, now we have public comments. And before I ask if there are any, I will read this disclaimer. At our regular board meeting held on February 9th, 2023, the board resolved that written public comments received by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be provided to the board but not read into the record during the meeting. Members of the public may address the board on the topics of our board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know the board is listening to your comments, but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this forum to items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for public input on any topic to 20 minutes unless it's waived the item limit or, or an item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. The board respects the right to members, sorry, the board respects the rights of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, please recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during a public comment meeting may be a violation of the student's right to privacy and thus the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it is important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in a public board meeting, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the board may not prohibit such, such comments, board policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, providing more opportunity to be heard than in, than is allowed under the open meeting law that governs this meeting. And so with that being said, we have zero.
Well, we did have zero, but now we have one general public comment submitted.
Okay.
And it, oh.
And I was going to say before that there were public comments submitted before the 3:00 PM and those will be put into, into the record. And so now we have one?
Yes, we have one public, general public comment request from Daniel Gandara.
All right.
Good evening. So I just, I'm giving this public comment because I just really want to thank Superintendent Hildreth, CBO Dovol and Director of Facilities, Vanowitz. On February 27th, I graduated from Cash Academy with this coalition of adequate school housing. It is a year-long crash course on school, every, everything, school facilities. It's been a long time since I went to school, but you know, graduated in 98, the best year. but, you know, graduated in 98, the best year. And it's been a while. But I really want to thank you guys for believing in me, putting me through that academy, and that's what I want to do tonight. I want to thank you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. All right. No other public comments. Okay, there's no public hearing. Information discussion items. Presentation of the Project Labor Agreement between Washington Unified School District and Sacramento Sierra Building and Construction Trade Council, Monique Stovall.
Good evening. I am joined with our representative from DWK Legal Counsel, Sam Santana, to provide an update on our progress towards a project labor agreement between our district and the Sacramento Sierra Building and Trade, excuse me, Building and Construction Trade Council. We have been working on a proposed agreement for over a year related to project labor agreement, and we believe that we do have an agreement that we're ready to bring forth to you today for discussion and consideration. At this point, I am going to pass it to Mr. Santana to provide just an overview of the key points in this agreement for discussion.
Thank you for inviting me tonight. Thanks for the intro. Is this going to control the? Give it my best shot. Yeah, so as Monique pointed out, we did negotiate a project labor agreement with the, I can't remember the name, Sacramento Sierra Building and Construction Trades Council. And as Monique pointed out, this has been a process. Here we go. A process that's taken a little bit over a year. Thank you for your patience, Board Member Prazadi. I know that you have been a very keenly part of the team in terms of getting that moving forward and making sure that we're making progress toward an agreement. So really quick overview, Project Labor Agreement is a pre-hire collective bargaining agreement that establishes terms and conditions for construction projects within the district. That is defined in the Public Contract Code. It's also commonly known as a project stabilization agreement and/or a community workforce agreement. And for our purposes here at the district, this PLA is going to apply to the Elkhorn Element, Village Elementary School project. So there is going to be a construction project for this particular site, and this PLA does define the quote-unquote "project" as the Elkhorn Village Elementary School Construction Project. So this is, I think, meant to be kind of a trial with regards to the applicability and how beneficial it is to the district. And so we're going to apply it to this particular project and see how it goes as the project progresses. Some of the benefits that we negotiated, and they're part of a typical PLA, is that there should be, and there are agreed to be no strikes or lockouts on the project. But that will mean that there'll be labor peace on the project as far as the construction worker, work and workers are involved. One of the key provisions that the district really wanted in this particular PLA was to have a local hiring provision. So in Article 11.1 of the draft agreement that's been agreed to, but has not yet really been approved by the board, it outlines the objective that not less than 50% of the combined journey level and apprentice hours worked for this particular construction project shall be hopefully filled by local area residents. And the PLA defines local area residents to mean first party being given to residents of West Sacramento, second party being given to county of Yolo or county of Sacramento residents, and then the third priority in meeting that 50% level will be for residents of Placer, Eldorado, Amador, Sutter, Yuba, Nevada, Sierra, San Joaquin, Napa, and Solano Counties. And so those are the three priorities that we hope will meet the requirement for that 50% local hiring for this particular project. One of the benefits from the PLA is that it will ensure that there's a skilled and trained workforce for the district's construction project. This is both reflected in the recitals and also in Article 11.4. One of the benefits that's not on this particular slide, but that does apply for us is that if we were to pursue a lease-leaseback delivery method for the project, lease-leaseback requires that there be skilled and trained workforce certifications. However, if we have a PLA already in place, such as we would for this particular project, we don't have to comply with those extra requirements, because we would already be meeting them via the PLA. I think that's a good selling point for that particular issue. And another important provision that we negotiated into the PLA was to have educational programs for students be part of this PLA. So in Article 11.5, we discussed the support for pre-apprenticeship programs, which would assist district students and historically disadvantaged populations. Also in that particular article, we emphasized collaboration with particular district programs, such as the Career Technical Education Residential and Commercial Construction Pathway, and as well as the Northern California Construction Training Program. We also thought it was important, and the unions agreed, that there be non-discrimination language in the PLA. We obviously want to be equal opportunity employers for district projects, and so there's language that specifically emphasizes that there should be no discriminatory practices and that equal opportunity employment opportunities should be given regardless of any particular makeup of those particular employees. And in 17.2, we added in a provision which we thought would be important for you, the board, to determine whether this is a beneficiary type of agreement, and that there'll be an assessment at the end of the project to make sure that mutually agreed upon metrics are used to gauge whether the opportunities for businesses and workers from historically underrepresented groups were present, and whether women were given also that equal opportunity to work on these construction projects. So that's obviously a very quick overview of the PLA. As we know, it took, you know, a little bit over a year to kind of, from the inception to finalizing all these particulars, and it's much more than a five or six-slide agreement, but I think that's kind of a 10,000-foot overview which highlights the key provisions. Did you want to add anything?
Thank you. Oh, we haven't, I believe we have public comments?
Yes. Did you want to call them up? Do you want me to start now?
Yeah, we could start.
All right, we have seven people that signed up to speak. Our first speaker is Tom Enslo, followed by Jason Billington.
Good evening, Board President, Board Members. First of all, I'd like to thank staff. Oh, I'm Tom Enslo. I'm the attorney with the Sacramento Sierra Building and Construction Trades Council, and I helped negotiate this agreement. And I'd like to thank staff for working with us on this. You know, they're very firm on the provisions they felt were important for the district, and they're reasonable in ensuring that this agreement follows area standards for what these agreements look like. And that's really important, because we have a lot of these agreements around here. The Sacramento School District, City of Sacramento, Elk Grove, you know, all over the place. And if these agreements are too different, it's hard for contractors to kind of navigate them, and you're going to have less participation. So it is important that where we can, we have some uniformity, but we also recognize, you know, the individual needs and desires of the agencies that are entering into this. I'd like to, you know, just, you know, make a couple of quick points. One is that, you know, you may at some point hear from some opponents that CWTA's, you know, discriminate against non-union contractors or increase costs. Those are absolutely not true. You know, first of all, state law requires that a public PLA allows non-union contractors to bid and be awarded on these projects. Studies shows that they are regularly awarded work on public PLA projects, and it works well. It actually gives them more of a workforce. You know, they get to, they get access to a highly skilled union workforce. They're a small contractor that allows them to work on bigger projects. So, you know, there is no discrimination against non-union contractors for these types of agreements. And study after study has shown that CWTA's project labor agreements, they don't increase costs. They don't materially change the amount of bidders that you have on projects. There was a big study of about 250, 250 projects that were for community colleges. You know, they found that this reduced cost compared to projects without the PLAs, and they had, you know, the same number of bidders. Finally, just real quick, this is also, really dovetails nicely with the goals of the district, because CWTA's ensure increased work opportunities for apprentices and apprentice graduates. And that's the engine that makes the district's investment in its construction pre-apprentice, in its technical career programs pay off. You know, without a CWTA, there are less apprenticeships available for students when they graduate. So it's really, you know, it really, you know, works well. Create jobs for your students and your graduates, and in this PLA, we commit to work with those programs to make them more effective. So we appreciate, you know, staff for working with us on this, and we look forward to this getting voted on in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Jason Billington.
Thank you. Hello, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and represent Washington Unified School District and the construction programs that we have here. I'm deeply rooted in this community. I've been here for 18 years. CTE credential teacher. I've been a, I was in the Plumbers Union, journeyman for eight years. Went into the Carpenters Union for 13 years, journeyed out. Right now, I'm in the Labor Union, journeyman with a full teaching credential. It's all I've ever done. I'm absolutely passionate about what we do here. We've done amazing things. When I first started working here, we built 15 homes with students. So we would take adult students, high school students, take them out to the houses, rebuild the houses, give them back to the city. Did that with the city council many, many years ago, before the housing crash kind of took over. But we do amazing things with the students. We do the certifications, we do the job placement, we do all the trainings. We do the wonderful stuff with the high school students, go to all the shed competitions. So when I heard about an opportunity for local people to go to work, I got super excited. So that's what I'm here to represent. We're not asking for money, we're not asking for anything. We're just asking for you guys to take care of your own and make sure that 50% of the people do land on these jobs, okay? If not, let's pick some of our CTE high school students from any pathway, whether it's engineering, construction, or anything, and let's put them to work. Let's get them an opportunity to get into the IBW. Let's give them an opportunity to get into the Plumbers Union. So that's what I'm here for today, and I do support the PLA if that's what's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alan Green.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, President. Hi, my name's Alan Green. I am also a trade instructor with Northern California Construction Training. I've been teaching for about three years, and one thing I wanted Jason to add is the hundreds of people we're putting to work in the union trades, and they're graduating and getting into these apprenticeship programs. We've been pushing a hard line for 30 years, and I'm 100% for this project labor agreement for giving our students that opportunity to work locally here instead of having to go somewhere else. Appreciate your time. You have a wonderful night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeff Armstrong.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Armstrong. I'm along with my coworkers, Jason and Alan. I'm a member of Northern California Construction Training. I do all the marketing and the outreach. Very much in favor of this PLA, especially the local hire. The language negotiated in that PLA regarding local hires outstanding. 50% that these are local folks who are going to be working on local projects, keeping the money local. It's just a win-win for everybody, so just hope you really do consider it, because this is, I've been involved with PLAs in the past, and anytime you get this local hire stuff, it's just always great for the community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Derek Barrett.
Hello, Board Members. I'm a proud parent and resident of West Sacramento. Actually, I put, or excuse me, we put four wonderful boys. I corrected myself. Four wonderful boys through school here, and they went to college. And I'm proud to say that I personally support the PLA program, but also as the Executive Director of People Working Together Contractor Advisory Council, we represent minority contractors' interest in the region. We are also on board and fully, fully endorse the PLA agreement. We understand the value of a workforce program, and especially a local workforce program to put folks to work and beautify our city and build our city up even more. So hope to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kevin Ferreira.
Good evening, Kevin Ferrer. I'm the Executive Director of the Sacramento Sierra's Building and Construction Trades Council. Would want to thank the district for giving us the opportunity to work with you in creating these career opportunities into our apprenticeship programs. We have 28 career pathways in unionized construction, and in working with NCCT, who's a pre-apprenticeship partner of ours, and we're helping the students who, you know, become aware of what these career pathways are, the different opportunities in construction, and also working with the district and city council members as well, who's eyeballing this, who wants to be a part of this as well, in creating outreach programs to recruit locally. And we're looking forward to the opportunity to make this a successful project if you vote to pursue this. And I want to echo the remarks with the staff that helped negotiate this PLA. They were professional and couldn't ask for a better team. I mean, it did take a long time to get this done, but at the end of the day, I think this is a very good agreement and to, you know, to kick the tires with, so to speak. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our final request on this item is from Devin Evers.
Hello, my name is Devin Evers. I'm the business representative for the Plasters Local 300 and an affiliate of the Sacramento Sierra Building Trades Council. So, and my mom was a teacher in Elk Grove Unified for a long time, and San Francisco Unified, so go teach. So our training center is actually, our plaster's training center is actually right down West Capitol, under the freeway, off of Industrial, and I encourage you all to stop by and see what we do. So currently, we are doing some work at the State Capitol, doing some ornamental plastering. We're doing some really neat stuff in the Jessa Unra Project downtown Sacramento. And I invite you to come to our training center and see what we do. So I've heard a couple of words that are big, big words, and it's opportunity and a pathway. And that's what we've provided all these years. So I hope that you consider this PLA project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any board comments?
Yeah. Thank you, staff, for including the amendments related to our CTE pathways, because that was a robust discussion, that we wanted to make sure that our students. Jason's giving me a thumbs up. You were in my head in that dark room, right, to make sure that...
It was a dark room.
It was a dark, it was a dark room, the daytime before that. So really appreciate, and thank you to the building trades for accepting that. I'd also be remiss to not say, would you consider a priority four, right, to also hire our graduates from these programs, right? Our WSC, the Adult Ed, and as mentioned in public, the River City High School, you know, CTE program. So just a consideration as part to meet that 50% mark, which opens up your, again, your pool to meet that 50%. So just as a consideration, since you've already amended that to include our true partnership with our apprenticeship programs, that's a consideration as a possible priority four. four. Yeah. But again, just really, really great work. It's been a long time back and forth and really prioritizing. Our community is just, you know, was a really robust discussion on our end. And knowing that they might move to Solano and other areas that are not necessarily the primary area, so thank you for the flexibility.
I want to echo the thanks for the work this took, as you said, a year to do, and appreciate all of the work from everybody. Thank you, Jason, for, for your words, but also for all that you do and for keeping us in the loop of all of the things happening right now with our kids, our big kids, and the work that they're doing, because it's been really great to get those emails, see all that the students are doing in, in your pathway. Years ago, we did have an agreement with the carpenters' union that for our pre-apprenticeship program, that they would take our kids, and there was a point system, and we included, we added in that, that female students had an extra point up because we know that women are underrepresented in your field. And so I think that for this agreement, this took a year, I, I'm okay with where we are, but I would like to think about that as we look at this year that we have together and we think about our next project would be our theater, River City High School. And so looking at how, how many women are, do we have on the job, and is that something that we might want to incorporate in the future?
Thank you. So I guess I need to kind of make my apologies for being such a pain in the butt about this and pushing so hard and being so vocal about it, but it's something I truly believe in. I think, you know, these community workforce agreements really are the fabric of, you know, our society because it gives our young, you know, and oftentimes struggling students a way forward. It gives them something to look forward to at a career path that is good wages, and it's not just a job, it's a career. Comes with pensions and benefits and something that they can build their families and pass down for generations. And I've seen this happen. And so I'm just 100% behind this, and I, the one thing that I did see was something about matrix. I also want to see us compare, you know, some matrix to other jobs, historical jobs that were non-PLA, because I don't want to see just this one-time pilot project. I want to see us use it in the future, too. So as we look at this pilot program, or this, this Elkhorn project, I want us to look at the opportunity to do the theater, to the theater project as well, so we have a bigger sample size of projects to compare. Because by and large, Washington Unified has never done PLA. There have been PLAs in the city before, but there's never been one in Washington Unified. So I would really like us to have more of a sample size when we start making our analysis of what actually works. And I tend to believe that when we do all said and done, we're going to find that the work product is going to be better because the, you know, the, the workforce is going to be better trained, as well as it'll come in on time. And that is money. Time is money. So I fully believe that this PLA is going to be, is going to be a great benefit for all the kids in our, in our city, as well as all of the residents in our city and our region.
Thank you. Kind of forgot about, is Al having, I'm sorry, Al, you weren't here, so I couldn't see you.
Can y'all hear me? Yeah, we got you. Okay. Yes, I'll make mine quick. Yes, in the, thank you for all of this, and I know it was an extensive conversation. In, for the future as well, I would like to include students that are maybe, you know, close to graduating from our CTE programs in PLA conversations, just to address maybe some of the needs that we may be blind to, just as, you know, see, see maybe some terms that we can involve them in, just to, again, include and wrap around and really take advantage of the opportunity that we are a unique and, and small community that, you know, we can really tailor this to best fit. So I would definitely encourage that we have some students, you know, moving forward as well, like, you know, to, to, to talk about other projects, but maybe they can also, I said, maybe point out some, or address some needs that we may be missing. So that's it for me, but thank you all, excited, excited about this.
Thank you, Al. So I'm just really excited. I see a lot of opportunity. I know this is going to be great, all in all, so thank you so very much. And so with that, it was just an informational item, and so we look forward to seeing this on, I'm thinking, the next board agenda. All right. Thank you. The next information discussion will be presentation of the 2022, wait, sorry, presentation of the 2024 to 2027 Washington Unified School District Home-to-School Transportation Plan. Again, Monique Stolz.
Good evening. This evening, I'm joined with our transportation supervisor, Angelina Valencia, to provide an update to our 2324 plan and an overview of our proposed 2024 to 27 home-to-school transportation. So I am Angelina Valencia, transportation supervisor. My purpose here this evening is to provide an update on the 2023-2024 home-to-school transportation plan, and then to present the 2024-27 home-to-school transportation plan update for discussion. All right. The home-to-school transportation plan does align to the strategic plan. It meets the goal of the whole child, healthy, safe, challenged, and supported. It ensures that all students are provided access and opportunity to resources and relevant educational and life experiences for individual success, and it meets pillar D, safe climate and equitable access for all. So this slide here just reviews the strategic priorities and key actions for pillar D, which again is safe climate and equitable access for all. Next, I want to review our 2023-24 transportation plan. So first, I want to go over the requirements. ED code 39800 to 39860 requires home-to-school transportation for students when the student has an individualized education plan or an IEP, or a 504 accommodation plan, which requires transportation, and/or the student is classified as McKinney-Vento. Currently, home-to-school transportation is not required for other students per the education code. The home-to-school transportation plan in 2223 enacted a state budget which increased the home-to-school transportation funding. Districts could receive a reimbursement of up to 60% of the prior year's transportation expenses. A governing board must have approved the home-to-school transportation plan by April 1st of 2023, which our district governing board approved our home-to-school transportation plan on March 23rd of 2023. So one of the original requirements of the home-to-school transportation plan was to conduct a consultation amongst our students, families, communities, and stakeholders. Feedback was provided on transportation for TK through sixth grade students, transportation for students with disabilities, and free transportation for unduplicated students. We were able to meet all of those requirements, but before we move on to what our future plan is, I want to remind everyone that one of our goals for the 2324 school year was to support TK students and more of the newcomer students. So I definitely want to take the opportunity to celebrate that we are now currently transporting students in TK with an IEP. A program was placed over at the Southport School, and we are transporting students both from the north and the south ends of towns to support that TK classroom. Also, last year, we were able to support a few of the newcomer center students. At this time, we are providing transportation to almost all of our newcomer students. Yep, Stacy actually sent me an email the other day for three students, and I'm going to work my magic to get those three students on a route, but at this time, we are transporting almost all of them. So let's now discuss our future plans. So although the updated home-to-school transportation plan didn't require additional consultation, we did decide to survey the students, families, and staff on what they felt was important to them, and these were the three topics or categories that came up. Distance, there were concerns about walking distance for students to travel to the bus stop. Bus capacity, parents want to ensure the buses are not overloaded. And then afternoon student drop-off, parents aim to make sure that their children are returned home within a reasonable time after school. Another one of the updates to the home-to-school transportation plan was the ability to do a multi-year plan. After talking it over with the business services team, we have decided to do a multi-year plan for three years. So we want to roll forward with a 2024 to 2027 multi-year plan. Our goal during that time is to continue to provide the current transportation plan along with adding transportation, free transportation, to all transitional kindergarten students and incorporating our preschool students who reside within the district boundaries, attend a WSD school, and/or transportation is designated in their IEPs. Now, our current fleet is adequate for the present demand in transporting students from home to school. However, as the community expands and demand grows, we will require additional buses and staff. Currently, our fleet consists of 19 diesel buses, four propane buses, six electric buses with one more arriving any day now, and two passenger vans that are 10-seaters. We use these buses and vehicles to transport about 1,250 students daily within our district. Okay, so this slide gives an overview of the 2024-25 transportation budget. The estimated home-to-school reimbursement is a little more than $1.7 million. Okay? If you minus the $411,000 that is typically given or provided, that is $1.3 million more than before. Obviously, that doesn't cover our total $3.5 million expenses, but it is very beneficial to helping fund the transportation department. So finally, let's talk about our next steps. First was to present the home-to-school transportation plan update to the board to provide feedback in alignment with the district goals and needs, which is why we're here tonight. And then we also will be reviewing current policies and recommending revisions that align with current district needs as appropriate, and we will provide the board with an update at the end of the multi-year plan, which will be in March of 2027. With all of that being said, one other update to the home-to-school transportation plan was that the updates did not require it to be adopted or approved by the board, but if you guys have questions or need clarification or want clarification on a specific topic or subject, I can definitely, you know, come back to the next board meeting. And with that, that concludes our plan.
I do want to take a moment to commend Angelina and her team. I get so many people sharing with me how helpful she is and how helpful her team is, how she works her transportation magic to be able to support our students. As we were going through this presentation, listening to Angelina, there's one thing that wasn't in the presentation that she and her team worked so hard on. When I joined our district, we didn't have a routing system first. That meant that we didn't know who was on the bus, at what time, where they were going, if we were supposed to be on the bus. So Angelina and her team worked so hard last year to get that up and going so that parents and students and everyone knows where our students- apparently, we had this type of system a few years ago, and then the vendor moved on that left a hole. And so Angelina, when she took over transportation, she really worked hard to set this-
Thank you. Well, thank you. Are there any public comments for the board comment?
Yeah. A couple things. I know you didn't say it, but, so students in foster care are also included. It's not explicitly in our McKinney-Vento, but it's under unduplicated, so just wanted to make sure whoever's listening and that they are included in this home-to-school transportation, because they have a right to school of origin. Yes, yes, consider that. And Corby Gonzalez and I were just chatting, whatever happened to our VIA project?
So that was the vendor.
Oh, that was the vendor.
That was the vendor who decided to move on.
Okay. So they just, they said, okay, this was, this was fun while it lasted, and we're going to move on?
They chose, yeah, to really move their area to the East Coast.
Oh.
Yeah. Although we still utilize our VIA here, and they are reaching out to be more involved with, you know, student transportation and how they can be there to support.
Yeah.
Because they have reached out locally recently.
Yeah.
So they are finding ways to support in other ways.
Yeah. Because it was just really cool to, you'd get the text and like, that's what we understood, and they would just be there on time, on demand as much as possible. Okay. But we, I thank you for kind of picking that up and kind of filling the gap.
I have just two points. Thank you so much for all of your work. Another piece that the district wasn't doing prior was some of our schools were right past the boundary of where we really should have been providing transportation. The NMI Road is one, and now there's a bus route right there. And my next-door neighbor, I watched her and her daughter walk down. My girls have been riding their bikes, but we taught, had a big talk about, well, if we change our mind and you want to ride the bus, it's now an option, because before it really wasn't. So I want to thank you for that. We, it's really appreciated and seen. My two questions are, one, I, I know looking at your plan that we were six bus drivers short, and so I just wanted to ask if there's anything that we need to do as a board to address that or pieces in that piece. And then the second question is, I was explaining to a member of the community that not all of our buses were electric because we were talking about distance and, you know, heading up the hill and why we were investing in some propane. And then they said to me, that sounds propane, that sounds so dangerous. And I did not know how to explain how we had propane buses, and I tried, I said, I don't think, we wouldn't put our kids on a dangerous, but, but it does sound a little dangerous. So if you could help us, maybe not in this moment, but if we had something maybe on our website or somewhere to just explain what a propane is, because it's not in our common language of, you know, those who are not in transportation. No, that's a great idea. I actually, I can totally work with your ghost to get that on there, on our, our transportation page. I actually had a community, a community member reach out yesterday or the day before yesterday and said, do you think you can turn those electric vehicle noises down there? They're loud. So I thought to myself, I wonder where we could put something for the community to be aware of why we, I just reiterated that it's a safety feature, and it really truly is to protect the community. So maybe we do just have a, you know, a page explaining the differences in school buses. Yeah. And then we'll help when they reach out to us, you know, we know where to tell them to go. So that would be great. And then the short, the bus shortage piece, if that's still a, is still a situation now or anything in terms of- in terms of troubleshooting that you can think of that we can?
Absolutely. Um you know, it is a nationwide shortage. Um one of the great things about our school district is we do offer a program for um anyone interested um to to come in and take an original school bus training course. We currently have two instructors who can give that training, myself being one of them. Um and we do, we produce a lot of drivers out of there. I will say um our pay is a little below some of those compared around us. You know, and I really do that, it comes down to wages in today's day and age. And um I think the home-to-school transportation plan that allows up to sixty percent um back, I I think that should be reflected on on an, on a potential or possible increase. But we do, we we currently just, we just finished a class and we have two school bus drivers doing behind-the-wheel training with us right now, so we are definitely exploring all of our options out there and 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 stretching ourselves to make sure that everybody who wants to be a school bus driver within our community um has the opportunity to do so.
Great, thank you. Hearing comparables is helpful for us.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, thank you. First, I want to say, great job on your presentation. The slides were short, effective, everything I could understand and read. There are not many of them.
Great.
Stay concise. Um the one question I have is, um I, you know, while some people don't know that we got our our electric buses via grants and things of that nature, I want to know, how do we get more? Because I I honestly love the fact that we do have them. I mean, yes, I understand, we may need to have um a diesel bus for longer trips, but certainly in town, more electric, the better. Um so I'm just wondering, is there any opportunities out there for grants or um does Lying discontinue their opportunity programs?
So um there are many grants out there, um but before we we purchase or um invest in any more electric buses, we've got to invest in electric chargers.
Oh.
So we are at capacity with our current chargers um at the yard, but it is something our team has began to discuss for what's next.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um I have nothing more to say. I mean, I think I exhausted a lot of, he didn't have anything. We already checked beforehand. I didn't forget about him this time. Um I feel like I exhausted a lot of it last year and saying, well, what about this? What about this? And so I'm just really happy. I haven't heard any, you know, no, like, my kid doesn't have a ride, I don't know what to do. And so it's definitely been a change. And my son, in the beginning of the school year, would tell me how buses were so full and packed because I don't even know where these kids are coming from. And then I got the message of, is your kid, like, where are your stops supposed to be? And I'm all, you know where you're supposed to be. It's for those others that don't know where they're supposed to be. So um I commend you because that's a lot of work, I know. So thank you for doing what you do and just in case, sometimes it, you feel like you're doing something and no one appreciates it. We all appreciate it. So thank you so very much. All right, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going on to consent agenda, but before we do, I know we have some public comments for this, I, for some of the items that are on there and.
Yes, we had four public comment requests on consent item OC two.
Okay.
The first public comment request is from Samantha Burr.
Well, no, we pulled it. She could still make, I can still talk.
Yeah, no, we would just sort of let you talk earlier.
Yeah, please talk. I can still talk. He told me, I checked. Yeah, we, we. Sorry to throw you under the bus, so to speak. Um so I got the, or saw the uh proposed calendar, and I'm coming to speak as a person who works summer school. And if that proposed calendar happens, none of us are gonna want to work summer school. You're gonna start right after, you're gonna go right to the school starts again, like where there's not gonna be any vacation break in there. Um we already have a hard enough time finding people and staff to work summer school. We're gonna have an even harder time finding people and staff to work summer school without any kind of a break at all. We're not gonna have any time to take care of our facilities, do the deep cleanings, all of the maintenance work that needs to be done. The secretaries were all gonna be in their way while they're trying to get all their cum files and everything else done that they do when we all leave because they love it when we're gone. Um like the, it, the logistics of it are insane. We have a hard enough time getting our summer school students to come back after the July fourth break when we still have like a week and a half to two weeks. And if you take away and you're making it go all the way till school starts again, none of them are coming back. We lose fifty percent as it is now. It's, I under, I I see probably what your idea was, and I commend it because I do think there is learning lost in there with those longer breaks. But it's a logistical nightmare as far as, like, I I don't, I love doing summer school, I really truly do, and I probably wouldn't do it because I need a break too. As it is, when you do summer school, you only get a couple weeks. So now I would have a weekend. Like, that's not, I I can't do it. I need a, I need a break. So it's also that longer winter break too, like you're, you're affecting vacation plans and work schedules for families. It it's really, I, like I said, I see where you were probably going, but I don't think it's really functional.
Thank you.
Our next public comment request is from Samantha Freeman.
You have the other Samantha.
Um I'm a parent at Westfield. Last year, when school started back from COVID, well, I won't say back from COVID, we had nine children meet standards when they took the first eye readies. You're proposing a three-week break for winter break. You have parents there that don't put their kids on the district site. We have a no homework policy, so our children won't get home, sent home anything. My children are now in the third and fourth grade. My children go on the district site. I'm an exception to the rule for Westfield. I am totally involved in my school. I'm trying to fight to get our test scores up. We are the worst school in the district. I'm aware of it. I'm not transferring. I'm not gonna hide from it. But by taking our children and having them home for three weeks, you, not only are you telling our teachers, you gotta work harder, but now you have to get them to retain what they lost. Our children do not retain the information for a long period of time. We also have to consider childcare. Childcare is two-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars a week through Champions with a hundred-dollar registration fee and a fifty-dollar for a second child. None of us make that kind of money. It's hard enough to have childcare for two weeks for, for winter break. Now, asking us for three weeks, that's, that's hard. I would have, I would actually have to take a leave of absence from my job, stay home and not get paid. And there's other parents that are gonna be in that same situation. Two weeks is great, three weeks is just way too many. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public comment request is from Doug Nep.
Samantha. Um I want to respect the comments of the the folks who come up, uh came up just now, and I want to explain a little bit about the process because I was on the calendar committee this year. I also want to acknowledge that um there's been a lot of talk in social media and so on and so forth, but the the decision made by the calendar committee was made by the committee. It was not made by HR. It was not made by district officials. It was made by a consortium of teachers and classified staff. And I want to also say that our priority, and this was big this year, was focusing on equity and focusing on academics. That was our priority. And um we made some decisions that might even be unpopular with some of our own members, but that was what we really wanted to do. So let me talk a little bit about it. First of all, it has been really challenging not to have balanced semesters in the high school. And we really ran into it this year. The first semester has been much shorter than the second semester, and being able to deliver full, solid curriculum in two semesters ha, is one of the priorities. Um another priority that we want to talk about is the ability to, we want to talk about a little bit. We talk about loss of learning. And I, while I am concerned about three weeks in the winter, uh any teacher will tell you the loss in the summer is huge. Our summer is too long, and saying that as a teacher who loves my summer break, it's too long. Kids come back and we see, because we talked to the teachers in the grade before us, we see what they knew at the end of the year and what they know at the beginning of the year, and it's significant. The last, well, maybe not the last piece, but I want to be a little bit bold here and talk about equity for all groups. I want to celebrate some students that came forward from my school, from Bridgeway this year, and they are Muslim students, and they talked about the fact that every time we leave, it's for a Western holiday. Now, we can't solve that problem right now. But if we're looking towards more of a modified traditional schedule, we can start to look at options that represent all of our students in the future. This isn't that schedule. This isn't that option, but I think we owe it to all of our students to look at the faces in our community, and our community is quite diverse, and to serve all of our students in our community. Our goal is to reduce learning uh loss that occurs in the summer. My hope would be that we could be um flexible and figure out some adjustments for summer school. Uh I know it's a a limited summertime and we have challenges there, but when we're talking about the scope of the entire school year and delivering um sustainable, standardized learning that is consistent for an entire year, I'd rather be flexible with the summer than impact the entire school year. Um also, I just want to say um you, we're losing daycare over winter break, but you're getting a week of daycare in the summer.
Thank you.
The last public comment request on this item is from Daniel Gondaro.
Bless you. So like Doug, I am also, I'm on the calendar committee, but I was graduating from cash on the last meeting, so I wasn't there. Um I'm coming from a different lens. Um I classified does not have a issue with instructional calendar. But, uh Farah, um we need to get rid of our month calendars. We have nine-two-six, nine-point-five, nine-point-nine-eight, ten, ten-and-a-half, eleven and twelve. We need to make them days. For example, I know the instructional calendar is a hundred-and-eighty-four days. I know that teachers have a hundred-and-eighty teaching days, but a few days in between to make one-eighty-four. Um for example, nine-point-nine-eight calendar is one-ninety-one. We need to have that flexibility if we're gonna have this kind of calendar to kind of be able to maneuver keep those days, but kind of maneuver. Um so I would like to meet with HR, um because I know, I understand, they they uh set the calendars or they make calendars. Um and then, as Doug stated on summer school, I would like to see the committee. Um we need Stephanie Groth, we need Rahale, we need, obviously, HR's there, um Stacy Tran, because the way this calendar is set by eleven-month employees and ten-and-a-half months, I believe the eleven-month employees will start working June, July, July, like eight. Well, summer school will end like July sixteenth or so. And then I believe another, I believe the ten-and-a-half calendar, ten-and-a-half calendar, so that'll include all secretary. Everyone will be at work, including the summer school secretaries. So that's gonna create just the cluster. Um so I'd like to see a lot more parties in this committee, um because as we know, we're starting to to, you know, have programs that really extend the summer and go through the whole summer. And like I said, it's an impact. It's an impact on cleaning facilities, doing facility work uh for custodians and MNO and also for facilities. But I I just, I need to, we need to meet, we need to uh work out the classified calendars, and I really want to get away from the months. I want to get the days. I know a lot of districts have the days. I want to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, although those topics were, or the comments were on um one of the items that had been removed. So with that being said, we will, is there any comments from the board?
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
All right. We have a motion.
Wait a second.
Trustee Wong, seconds, and now we're going to do um. Why can't I think of it? Thank you. Roll call vote. Trustee Vanegas. Uh Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti.
Aye.
And I too say aye. All right. Uh that is done. And we have no action items, we have no board governance, and board superintendent comments. Trustee Vanegas.
Dr. H?
Oh, Dr. H?
Just saying good evening and appreciate um all of the engagement that we always have. I'm not saying a lot because my internet is unstable, so um I will save longer comments for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you so very much. Yes, Al, since you're on, or you're kind of, you're on the mic.
I'll keep it short. I'll keep it short. Thank you all for um, for my technical team over there, uh moving me around and making me feel included. And thank you to everybody, and uh get some rest. Thank you all.
All right. Trustee Wong.
Yeah, um I wanted to give, Chris Hanks is in here, but he actually put together a really awesome um career kind of a professional development day for our CTE programs. I think it's the first ever, right? And those of you who kind of saw the pictures, just hundreds upon hundreds of our CTE pathway students, some of our teachers were there. It was, it was phenomenal, the vibe, the energy, and it was just so professionally done. I understand that he actually had um engaged his students to actually run some of those workshops, was just like, this is what, you know, great to be WSD, right? And people um forget that we have these wonderful pathways, and there's a reason why the governor came and visited us. And and Chris and all of our CTE folks are the, one of the the primary reasons that we're successful. So I wanted to just give him a lot of love, um because I saw him, he's like, it's like giving birth to a baby. Why? And here it is, and and hopefully he really enjoyed his weekend after um, after that. Um I was also had the uh honor and the privilege of um attending the Yolo Empower Her Leadership Event um where our, you know, again, fifty students from each of our districts across Yolo, all female, came and um just, it was, it was phenomenal. I always forget, right, representation matter, showing up in those spaces, especially for uh Women's History Month, um shared my story. And I think, you know, you know, Dr. H shared this uh last week at our board governance meeting is that, you know, this this young woman, I just, I told her I was born in Aganiguam, she's like, oh my God. I, you know, I'm a Pacific Islander, like, it's, you know, just this this pride of representation of our our students. So kind of showing up in those spaces. Um you know, equity happens in different ways, right, just represent, is representing, you know, folks. Um or even when um at Read Across America at Stonegate, not our DI program, I read um Letitia Ordessa's bilingual book, and all the young kids who, they felt seen in a way that is different than in in our DI programs. Again, this is Stonegate, um in a second grade, and the teacher's like, oh, I didn't know you spoke Spanish. And they're just, you know, go, in light hair, you know, light, you you know, light hair, you know, light eyes. And he was just, you know, these students were just so engaged and just, um those moments are the moments that I think, I know that we all um live to serve for, right? Um and then the, tonight's PLA, I just, I really just being just super clear that we're here for our students and their path. So just grateful that and grateful for the patience and and the hard work of our staff who who made it happen. And we go, I mean, and Linda used to say this all the time, and it's, we go slow to go fast. Right? I know that there's urgency all the time from some folks, but really appreciate the thoughtful process um and the care uh that you all on staff put into um to make this happen for our students. So thank you.
Okay, that's it. So very much. Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Um sure, I wanted to um.
I wanted to thank all of the staff and the principals and labor partners came out to the special board meeting that we had on curriculum and peace. I mean, that was its own board meeting. But I just thought that, you know, I drove away really appreciating that we had a space where, a less formal space where we were able to bring everyone together and also that our principals' voices were heard. And, and being able to just kind of, the, the way it was set up, I thought was really nice. And it helped pull everything together for me in terms of our vision going forward. And I appreciated that. And I look forward to doing those in the future as well. And like, I also wanted to bring up, although this could maybe go into a future update too. But as we think about going into our responses with the grand jury, I realize we're getting updates here. But I do think it's important too to make sure that's relayed to our community and to our staff. And so that they're, they're also aware of those and, and know that there's a lot of work happening and what that work is as we partner on that. And I just want to thank everyone for all of their hard work because there were a lot of feel-good moments that were just shared. And, and it does feel really good to see what's happening in our district with our kids and to hear their stories. And I want to thank everyone for all their work.
Vice President Pizzotti.
Yeah. I'd like to say, thank you for the invitation to the community schools meeting. I really appreciated that. That was so great. And don't threaten me with an invitation because I will show up. So that was really, it was a great education to see how everything was transpiring, all the planning that goes into making the community schools. And this was at River City, you know, a success. So, you know, I think that was, you know, just a benefit to see. I wanted to say thank you to Doug for the idea of a choir pathway. I didn't think about that. And it is often overlooked. We have many pathways for music, but we never seem to think about choir. So I hope we do contemplate that in the future. Especially since our previous superintendent was an amazing singer and took the opportunity to sing whenever she could. So. And she still does, right? So, yeah. I was able to attend two, two Read Across Americas, one at Westfield and the other at Westmore Oaks. And I, I gotta say, the kids that you get to see and read to respond so amazing to you. They really do. They're just so enthralled, like, oh, my God. You know, like, you're actually somebody. I'm, the only person I'm like anything to are you guys, not my, my own kid, not anybody else, right? So it was really kind of cool to have, you know, the kids just absorb everything you say to them and read, especially when you read to them in a voice, right? You put on character. There was some, there was some good points brought up by Ruth in the CSEA report, especially with regards to the YOLO Grand Jury Report. I think there's some things we need to really focus on in order to make our, to make our campuses safer. We've had a very rough, I guess, week and a half or week in terms of safety on our campuses. And I, you know, one of the incidents, I will say, is especially alarming. And I don't ever want to see that happen again. And I don't know what we have to do to adjust for that safety. But, you know, what I did realize was that, you know, we had, we had a police presence on our campus for the following week. At least four days that I was there. And I don't want to see that happen again. I don't want to see a parent walking into a classroom. That's not, that's not. You know, maybe looking into making sure that all campuses have crash bars or crash gates instead of the hand lock gates would be something we should be doing. You know, I don't know if we have any more Measure V money available, something like that. But it should be certainly a priority. And finally, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for getting this PLA across the finish line. I'm very thankful and very grateful. You know, there was quite a few meetings with the facilities subcommittee. And, you know, we certainly had our, our, our issues put out there and, and argued back and forth for, you know, the district to take to, to the Sierra. Sierra, what is it? Sierra Building Construction Trades. The building, yeah, Sacramento Sierra, that's what it is. I knew it was SSPTC. Yeah, so SacSierra Building and Construction Trades. And so the back and forth took much longer than what I had hoped. But it's done and it's cooked. So I just want to say thank you for that. I am grateful. I am truly grateful. And with that, I am.
Thank you so much. On that note, it's cooked. Next meeting, it will be served. Okay. Same. I was like, what's, what's cooking? I'm just saying, okay, there are a lot of things going on and you guys all touched on it. And so much, I'm actually really excited. My daughter went to the Empower Her, YOLO Empower Her. And it was, she came back and she was talking about it. By the way, if you know my daughter, she doesn't really talk very much. So she wouldn't stop talking. And it, so that's how impactful it was for her. And she saw somebody, one of her friends when she was younger, across the table and said her name. And she was like, oh, my God, I haven't seen you in years. And they connected as if they, you know, best friends who haven't seen each other, it was only a week. Like, that's how it was for her. And they reconnected and they, both being there, said something about, you know, I want to say about the child I'm raising. She's doing pretty good and she's making good friends. Yeah, there you go. There you go. So I'm just excited. Everybody's doing something. Our schools are doing things. Springs, uh, spring, spring sports are happening. YOLO handball tournaments. What about, when's that wall going up? I don't think I got that, that date. But I'd like to know the day because I, because I want a ribbon cutting for that. Yeah. So, and on that note, that's all I got to say. Everybody have a great Pi Day. I know we're not done. I'm just saying that's part of my, my comments. Okay, next, future board agenda items. Update on social emotional learning spring 2024 results. That's going to be held on March 28th. The approval of the PLA also on March 28th. And the update on COVID funding presentation. We yet to be determined. Now, on that note.
Oh, wait, no, 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 there's more. Any other future? I think last time we talked about, and I requested, maybe it didn't make it, update on the ELOP dollars and this after-school programming and planning around that.
I would like, I know we can put two-by-two agendas on a different thing with the city, but I wanted to bring it up here too, that I'd ask at the next two-by-two with our city partners that we have a discussion about safety overall. It does take a village. And we know we've had, you know, the, the road my girls bike on. There's been a fatal on each, you know, each end of it in the last, you know, this school year. So I think that we need to have a discussion about just safety in general with the community. Some of the things that have happened are with the adults, our kids. We know at the high school, we have suspensions. A lot of good stuff is happening here. But I think it takes us coming together and maybe we can entertain the idea of a, maybe a joint town hall or some discussion that we can have around really helping our community come together because it takes all of us to do that work and investing and bringing in all of our community members. And then the other piece I was thinking about, this doesn't really go with the future agenda. Maybe it can go under board governance. But I think we should consider the idea of maybe moving all of our agendas and pieces, the font to, if, I don't know if it's possible with this program, but Google has a default font, Lexin, that is better for those with dyslexia. I thought about that. Yes, we have a trustee who's been very vocal about that. I thought about it too as I was watching, you know, I've seen students speak here and saw one struggling a little, knowing her story, that she was a student who struggled, dyslexic and identified, left our district to get really intensive support, came back and just doing phenomenal now. But I thought, gosh, we could make life a little bit easier possibly. So I think we should think about that. As we know better, we do better. So possibly looking at how our board agendas, fonts can change. And, and then the other things too, just for us up here, the statements and things that are read. And, and it's font that's easy for all of us to read, but it makes life a little easier for us.
Anything else? All right, well then, on that note. I was like, because I'm over here like ADA of compliance. So everything.